Recording in progress.
Good evening. Welcome to the Banana Belt of Trinidad, Colorado, where the temperature is above freezing for the first time in many hours. Before we start, we're going to do the oath of office for Erin Ogletree. If you don't know, she was appointed to fill my vacant position last Thursday. So Erin and Audra, would you please come up?
Let's swap two sides. So raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Erin Ogletree.
Do solemnly swear by the ever-living God.
Do solemnly swear by the ever-living God.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Colorado.
And of the State of Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of City Councilmember.
Of the Office of City Councilmember.
I further swear to support and uphold.
I further swear to support and uphold.
The Home Rule Charter and Ordinances.
The Home Rule Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Trinidad.
Of the City of Trinidad.
In the capacity of City Councilmember.
In the capacity of City Councilmember.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Welcome back, Erin. Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Ms. Mantelli, would you please give us a pledge of allegiance, please?
Yeah.
Okay. But I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. DeCaw, Chu, Vermin, Trigill.
Here.
Ogletree, here. Williamson.
Here.
Grealish.
Here.
Item number two on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Williamson.
Yes.
Chu.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Trigill.
Yes.
Grealish.
Yes. Item number three, policy items and staff reports. I've been advised by Mr. Rupert that Mr. Mark Behill would like to come up and make a statement, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'd like to just read a brief statement that was posted on Facebook over the weekend. I'd like to give you some clarification on. Evidently, they were talking about the gas rates. And then it was stated also, they just raised water rates. Understand, the city buys gas and buys electricity. They don't pay a company for water. So why they raise water rates? Could that be because they buy tobacco, two tandem trucks, new pickups every year, heated floor in the shop, I can go on and on. Maybe look and see how the departments are figuring this out. We just want to give you some clarification on that. Mainly because a lot of people read this and get the misinterpretation that that's actually the way the city's ran. So I just want to get some truth out there for our citizens to know that that's not what's taking place. Part of it's true, but it's kind of misled. Yes, the gas department and the electricity do buy their power, gas from other companies. Water does not. But we do not own our water. That's the misconception that think our water is free. We don't have to buy it from anybody. But it does not come without a price tag. We own the right for that water, but we don't own the water, just like many other water users do. Kansas owns the same waters where we get our water stored from. A lot of the ditch companies, the Southside Ditch, that Tonya Lopez Ditch, they all have these water rights used for agations. We turn into consumable water, which costs a lot of money. We have to pay water right attorney fees every year, thousands of dollars, to be able to keep those water rights. Then it starts with our infrastructure. In order to use that water, we have to build a reservoir. That's North Lake and Monument Lake. That costs money to treat the untreated, to store the untreated water. Then two miles downstream, we have to build a pipeline and a water filtration plant to treat that water. That comes at great costs. We have to hire operators down there. Or the chemicals, have certified operators treat that water. Then we have to build a pipeline 35 miles or so into Trinidad to get the water to Trinidad. Eight pressure sustaining stations along Highway 12 in order to give residents along Highway 12 pressurized water. Then we got to build a 5 million gallon water storage tank at the Trinidad Lake Corps of Engineers to store a portion of this water. Then we got to build a pipeline to get it to, and build three pump stations to pump that treated water to our other three 1.5 million gallon water storage tanks. And then from there, we build an infrastructure in our distribution system with piping that allows people, residents, to tap it on their streets in order to get that drinking water. So this is not by any means free. It comes at great cost to the city and taxpayers. So it's not free. It costs a great deal of money, not only to get the system in place, but we also have to maintain it to make sure everybody has safe drinking water. Second, the statement also said that they have to buy two baccals and two tandem trucks. We do own tobacco, and we do own two tandem trucks. As I stated previously, we have about 35 miles of pipeline from North Lake into town. We have everything in town that everybody else has. Now, we have another 30 miles southeast to the prison and the Penning Canyon Maneuver Site out there, our target base that we have to maintain. So yes, we do have two baccals and dump trucks. There's time we have leaks simultaneously in different areas that we're working on. Even the leak here in town, we have some large holes that we got to fix leaks on at times. We all have one dump truck, one back on site, another one loading road base to put back in the hole when we're done fixing it. The other ones loading the mud out so we can get it out of there quicker. One of the first questions everybody asks, how long is it going to take? When are we going to get a water backup? If we didn't have that equipment, we wouldn't be able to get it done as quickly as we do. We normally will stay on the leak and we'll stay out there until we're done. We don't go home until we're done and those streets are packed up. So yes, you have to have good working equipment. You have to have dependable equipment in order to provide that service to the city of Trinidad. As far as buying new pickups every year, we don't. We buy them once, we usually get around 100,000 miles. And naturally, won't we turn over and start replacing them at that point? As far as having heated floor in our shop, we have, it's called infrared heating. It's hot weather heating. So yes, our floors are heated. When Jim Fernandez built that water shop back in 32,000, he put infrared heating throughout the whole building. You know, we can't have our pumps freeze inside of the building. Infrared heating is one of the most efficient heating sources there is over Fort Scare. You just, you can't beat it. He was wise enough to install it at the time. So a lot of the stuff they said is true, but with a lot of misconception. I just wanted to take a few minutes to clarify that with you so that our citizens of Trinidad understand that that's what we do with our money. The other thing I'd like to bring up is we have all this cost burden on us. And our water, monthly water bill to see Trinidad's only 24.75 a month. That's about 75% of what most of us pay in the winter time. This time of year for gas, electric, and about 50% of what we pay for sewer. So that's very cheap, in my opinion, you know? And to get comments like that, that we're overcharging it. That's why we raise our water rates. This equipment was purchased prior to the water rate increase. The water rates came in place basically due to COVID-19. Our costs escalated from material anywhere from 40% to 200%. That was our primary reason we implemented our water rates, not to buy equipment that which we've already purchased prior to that. So I just want to clarify that for you so that the rest of our citizens understand that we're spending our money in the water departments. We have a very dedicated staff. They have all their certifications with the state, on state levels to maintain that everybody has safe drinking water. It could be blittered conditions, 2 o'clock in the morning get water leak, and they're out there fixing it. You know, I couldn't talk more highly of my water department crew. So, you know, they're there to serve the citizens of Trinidad, and they always will be. I just don't like being bashed the way we're doing and the public being misled of what's really going on out there. So I just want to take the time to clarify that. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Behill.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you for, and I agree with everything you said. I appreciate every staff member that is associated with the City of Trinidad. You do a fantastic job. I just hope one of these days, people will pay attention and understand what's going on before they go to social revolve. I appreciate that. Anybody?
I just would say, I thank you. You don't know less than explanation. Because we're the ones who authorize those purchases after you explain the need. And our first goal as a city council is to make sure that we have adequate infrastructure. And we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you. Mark, thank you for your explanation. It was thorough, professional. I absolutely agree with everything you said. And to second what Councilman Ogletree said. I mean, we oversee large expenditures. The city manager has his level of approval. It's all of our goal to be fiscally responsible. And much to your credit and every other utility's credit, you guys go above and beyond in providing our citizens with quality service. Another thing that I'd like to say is I would remind everybody listening tonight, and Mr. Ruger, if you would correct this number, Mr. Ruger. But collectively, the staff of City of Trinidad worked together and had an $800,000 savings on the budget last year. I mean, that's appreciable, and it's indicative of people being budget minded and as conservative as possible, and should be commended. So thank you for your defense of that statement tonight.
Mr. Ruger?
No, thank you all. I think we need to kind of refrain from a discussion on this item. But no, I'm glad Mark could provide that update for you all in the public. So thank you, guys.
Any other staff or policy?
That's it tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Petitions or communications, oral or written? I'd like to remind you ahead of time that please be courteous, please be respectful, refrain from any foul language or disrespectful language. Thank you. Marcy Keat? Keep Trinidad Safe.
And Mayor, just for the record, centers are allowed up in five minutes. Less will.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
No, that's okay. We got you back. Less will give you a one-minute warning.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm sorry, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Debbie Berry, and I am the grant coordinator for Keep Trinidad Safe.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and City Councilmembers and distinguished guests.
So Keep Trinidad Safe came through with a crime prevention initiative. And we are thinking, doing very well what we've seen so far, 385 clients in the year and a half that we've been in. We have two different kinds of clients. We have youth that we call in our prevention program. And we are, I think, 142.17 on that with the students at the schools. And then with our wraparound clients or the clients that come in, we help them find resources. Substance uses usually, they're getting out of jail, things like this. We have seen 90 clients. Last week, we signed up nine new clients, which is seven in one day. And then with the warming center, we signed up four more just through that event.
Okay. We are also working on a grant called Drug Free Communities, which is a federal grant through the Office of blah, blah, blah. I forget. I'm sorry. Is it ONJV?
You know, acronyms.
Acronyms, right. So in essence, what it does is it works on prevention with youth. The grant is a five-year grant with another five years afterwards. 125,000 per year, which takes it to 625,000 for the first five years, and then another 625 for the next five years. So that would give us approximately 1.2 million. They have also decided this year that they are going to do another continuation five-year grant. So that would take us up to 1.875 million, almost $2 million. Through this, they ask for letters of support. We are requesting that the City Council do a letter of support and sign. Thank you, Mr. Ruger, for doing the city's letter. We also received a letter of support from the county commissioners. We've also received one from probation. So we feel that to round out our community government that it would be very nice if we could get a letter of support from the mayor and city council members of the City of Trinidad. Just to kind of give us that little extra added boost for this program and for what we are trying to accomplish.
And quickly, I wanted to share with you exactly, this is from a client. And last winter, I saw a flyer for a group advertised at Keep Trinidad Safe. It is called Parents Children's Tea. This flyer said it's a support group for families who have been affected by substance abuse. I was newly clean and sober. My 10-year-old daughter had been in foster care for nine months, and I was working toward reunification. Although DHS had been supportive of my sobriety, I thought attending a group that was not required might be helpful. When I walked into the doors of Keep Trinidad Safe, I was still quite vulnerable. I had left an abusive marriage of 17 years just a year earlier. I was addicted to alcohol and other substances at the time that I left my husband in Raton. And shortly thereafter, my daughter was taken into foster care. At my first group, I felt such love, kindness, and support. I decided to come back again the following week. I never felt any judgment from the staff at KTS, and that support kept me coming back. I continued to stack up day after day, week after week, and month after month, clean and sober. In May 2022, I was reunited with my daughter and granted sole legal custody. But our journey was just beginning toward renewing our relationship. My daughter had suffered trauma because of mine and her father's domestic violence household and our alcohol and substance abuse. She looked forward to attending Parent and Children's Tea. Every week, the programs and staff at KTS gave us a completely different kind of support than DHS and other court mandated programs. Under their guidance, I began learning about healthy parenting styles and techniques. My daughter started school in the fall and got honor rolls for the first time. She is thriving and happy. I am in contact with KTS every week, and I feel myself healing from years of domestic violence, abuse, and substance use. I'm now over 14 months clean and sober. With the help of KTS, my daughter and I have our own apartment. More importantly, though, we have support and guidance in navigating our lives and dealing with our past traumas and moving past them. We are both so thankful for KTS. They quite possibly saved our lives, and we can never repay them for their kindness and support. It's hard to put into words how much I appreciate the organization. I will just say, I'm thankful to have them on this journey of reunification and sobriety. I'm truly grateful for this organization and all of their highly professional and trained staff.
I'm sorry I didn't give you the one-minute warning.
Oh, sorry.
No, not at all. I'm sorry.
Okay. Pretty much, that's it. So if however you need to do, we would be very grateful if you could support us.
When do you need the letter by?
By the end of January.
Okay. We got you.
Okay.
Thank you. Didn't mean to cut you off.
Item number five on the agenda is the consent agenda. Item 5A is approval of the regular meeting minutes of January 2, 2024, and the special meeting minutes of January 11, 2024. Item B, authorization of issuance of a letter of support on behalf of Keep Trinidad Safe for a grant application. Item C, authorization to open a new checking account at First National Bank for the animal shelter with Cheryl Navarette, Finance Director, and Audra Garrett, City Clerk, as authorized users, signers. Item 5D, approval of bills. Item 5E is approval of payroll from January 6, 2024 through January 19, 2024 totaling $73,784.58. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Second.
Call the vote, please. Ogletree?
I, yes, except I have to abstain from the second meeting on January 2, which is Friday.
Trigill?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grealish?
Yes. Item six, unfinished business. There is none. Item seven, public hearings. 7A is a public hearing for consideration of an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 12 dash 26 Service Classifications, Rates, Charges, and Regulations, Adoption of Tariff of Chapter 12 of the City, Trinidad City Code to provide for the adoption of Gas Tariff Number Two, which shall govern the provision of natural gas service by the Trinidad Municipal Gas Department. The hearing is now open. Mr. Pura? Oh, you snuck up.
You know, this isn't relevant to the hearing, but I'd like to explain a little bit about the letter that was sent out to the citizens.
Yes, sir.
Thursday. Basically, what it was, was a letter of caution to reduce gas consumption. I received a letter from our gas supplier stating that the pipeline companies, and we have no control over the pipeline companies, neither do our supplier, may put what they call an FO, OFO, on the pipeline, which is an operation flow order. If that's imposed at that point, we have a limit of what we can pull out of our storage. Once that limit is met, then we have to purchase gas at the daily rate. So what I was doing was trying to get out to the citizens to conserve on gas, to save their money if that flow order was put into effect. As of right now, they said we're still not out of the woods. I talked to them at 4 o'clock. It looks good, but they can't say we're out of the woods completely. They still might impose that flow order. We are pulling out of storage right now. I tried to get a percentage of what we've pulled out. They're going to send me a report. I still haven't received the report. So I'm working on that. Basically, what this all means is we have to get the pipeline companies in advance, and this is months in advance, what our scheduled volume of gas we're going to use every day is. If we go under or over that volume, if we don't have storage, we have to pay penalties. And then if we go over, we pay the daily market price. We have storage, so anytime we go over or under, we inject or we withdraw from storage. The gas had already been paid for, that it goes into storage, so we don't pay for it as it comes out. Just to give you an example, one of our pipelines is the Northern CIG Pipeline. The town of Walden does not have storage. Their price of gas went from 30 cents a CCF up to $2.30 a CCF over the weekend. So with our storage, that has saved us. And that's what I was trying to do, because if they put a limit on storage, our price of gas would have jumped up, that or higher. The Ventura Pipeline went from 30 cents to $4. That's what they went up to. So it's quite an increase. So the letter was put out just to kind of conserve on natural gas, to help everybody. It wasn't anything to do with the City of Trinidad. We would have to go out to the customers and the citizens and reclaim the money that we spent for the gas.
Thank you.
We would have no other choice.
Thank you for this clarification.
So that's another clarification on that.
Thank you.
So back to the public hearing. If you guys have any questions, I think we talked a lot about it, so.
Ms. Ogletree?
I appreciate the work that you and Mr. Behill put into your work session presentation. And I watched that carefully, and I think you answered the questions that I had had on the last time about this, so I feel comfortable with this one.
Thank you.
And a question, Steve, just thank you for getting this done and clarifying that to the public because that makes a big difference, Steve. It kind of helps us, too. Thank you. Thank you, Steve, for everything that you did, working on that. Everything is pretty cut and dry and clear. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, same. Appreciate the work session. It did answer the questions. Obviously, it's a large burden, but it's a burden that every resident of Trinidad shares equally. And the fact of the matter is, the units of gas have costed us more than you've collected, so we didn't need to make that up.
Yeah.
I have no further questions.
I have no questions either. Your past presentations have been pretty, pretty clear, and I appreciate that. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? The hearing is now closed. Item 7A1, second reading of an ordinance repealing and reacting, reenacting Section 12 dash 26 Service Classifications, Rates, Charges, and Regulations, Adoption of Tariff of Chapter 12 of the Trinidad City Code to provide for the adoption of Gas Tariff Number Two, which shall govern the provision for natural gas service by the Trinidad Municipal Natural Gas Department. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Williamson?
Yes.
Trigill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Grealish?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
That was a.
I know, way to mix it up. You look alive, people.
He ordered this.
Sorry.
And by the way, Mr. Williamson is keeping score of all my ears, so. Okay. Item 7B, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending Section 7 dash 5, 7 through, I'm sorry, let me read. 7 through 50 through 7 through 53 of Article 8, Purchases of Chapter 7, Finance and Taxation Regarding Small Purchases, Informal Bids and Formal Bids. The hearing is now open. Ms. Garrett?
It'll be Mr. Ruger. Yeah. So just very quickly, and we had talked about this on first reading, but what we're attempting to do here is up our small procurement thresholds to keep up with the increasing costs of everything. So what this does is it builds in much more efficiency for our operations. Essentially, the biggest change is anything over deemed in value of over $100,000 would now have to go out to a formal bid or RP and then be approved by city council. Currently, we're at $50,000 for that threshold. Just one example that I mentioned last time for reasons to change is the price of a vehicle, a truck, that type of thing, used to just be routine and very much in our small purchase realm. Now, those are getting up into the $60,000, $70,000 range. So we don't, we don't want to have to do a formal solicitation every time. However, having said that, I do want to make it clear we would never purchase anything without getting the best price obtainable. So we will always go through at least a quote process, if not informal bids, and make sure that we're spending our tax dollars wisely. So happy to answer any questions, but this is something that I think will really help out with our efficiency.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I get to go first, and I really don't have anything to say. I mean, we discussed it last time. It makes sense to me.
Mr. Trigill?
No questions. It's pretty clear. You know, we went through this before.
Yes, same here.
I have no questions. And we had a couple of situations, just to clarify. Over the past couple of years, when there was especially a vehicle on the market, then by the day, we had to make a decision to buy it before the deal went away.
Correctly.
Anybody in the audience to speak for or against? The hearing is now closed. Item number 7B1, second reading of an ordinance amending Sections 7 through 50 through 7 through 53 of Article 8, Purchases of Chapter 7, Finance. purchases of chapter seven, finance and taxation regarding small purchases, informal bids and formal bids. Call for the vote, please. Oh, no, I'm sorry. May I make motion? Somebody make.
Second.
Call the vote. Oaktree?
Yes.
Trishel?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Criago? Yes. Ordinance carries. Under, uh, public hearings, seven C, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending Article two electricity of chapter twelve regarding extensions. The hearing is now open.
Mayor Council, that's, that's me as well. This is a, a simple ordinance amendment. So currently in our ordinance, uh, we provide at the discretion of our power and light director to pay back the cost of a transformer, um, for new developments, uh, in terms of utility bill credits. It is not working very well. I'll just put it out there. So we have some who are on the system where it'll be thirty years before they get reimbursed. So we want to remove this language. It's just not functional. And then, uh, as far as future projects where there's a transformer need, uh, we can negotiate that cost share, if applicable, in any kind of economic development negotiations. So that's what we're doing here, and happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Oaktree, do you have any?
I don't have any questions. That makes sense to me.
Mr. Shu?
No.
None, thank you. Mr. Trishel?
No, no. No questions?
I have none either.
You guys are so easy.
Yeah.
It's easier than I thought it was. Anybody in the audience to speak for or against? The hearing is closed. Seven five, second reading of an ordinance amending Article two electricity of chapter twelve regarding extensions. Motion? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second. Call the vote, please. Trishel?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Oaktree?
Yes.
Criago? Item seven D, another public hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending Article fourteen, chapter fourteen, to include language previously contained within the Trinidad Municipal Code and correct reference to appropriate sections with said article. The hearing is now open. Who's gonna present?
I, I can talk about this one as well.
Might as well.
Yeah, so. Lot a roll.
Lot a roll.
So as you remember, um, and this is typical, we, uh, we recently updated our land use code, and there was a section pursuant to marijuana that was missed in that update. Um, this just puts it back in. And, uh, obviously, anytime we, we got an entire chapter of our code, there's bound to be a few, um, issues that come up subsequently. So this is just correcting that. And, uh, again, certainly happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Williamson?
I have no question.
Mr. Trishel?
I have no questions.
Mr. Shu?
No.
No questions? I have none either. Anybody in the audience to speak for or against? Hearing is closed. Call for the vote, please. I'm, I'm sorry.
So moved.
That's how far do I get? Three strikes, you're out. Second. Call the vote, please. Williamson?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trishel?
Yes.
Oaktree?
Yes.
Criago? Yes. Another public hearing, seven E, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending the zone classification of property described as lying and being in the county of Los Anamos, state of Colorado, two with township thirty-three south, range sixty-four west of the sixth prime meridian, section twelve, part of southeast quarter, northeast quarter, equalling, uh, equaling a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-four square feet, or two point nine six nine acres, also known as city view heights, filing number five, block number eight of lots one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, and in block nine, lots seven, eight, nine, and ten, city of Trinidad, Colorado, from medium density residential zoning to high density residential zoning Commonwealth, it's for the Commonwealth Development Corporation for the proposed Mark Apartments, and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance at three P M. on January twenty-ninth. And we have Mr. Mason here to present. Welcome to the city, Mr. Mason.
Thank you. Um, I'm Nick Mason, newly hired city planner, so.
Glad to have you.
I'm glad to be here as well. Um, I'm gonna go through the project just a little bit. So Commonwealth Development requested a rezone for the project site. Describe, it's a mouthful, so I ain't gonna go through that again. Um, a rezone falls into a major impact review. So just a real quick, uh, about the major impact review, we have a concept review. We did that December nineteenth. Um, some of you were here, some, some of you were not. Uh, and we had that with the planning commission. Uh, last week, on, uh, January ninth, we had a planning commission review. Um, and then this is a first reading, and it requires a second reading. Um, the rezones from a medium density residential to hi- high density residential for the purpose of putting a thirty-four unit apartment complex. Uh, and this apartment complex, uh, serves thirty percent to sixty percent AMI, um, that's the population it's, it's serving. Uh, Commonwealth is seeking a tax credit from CHAPA, um, and their application is due February first. Um, and for this application, they need to be appropriately zoned. Um, so that's why we're, we're trying to get through this, um, give them the rezone. That way they can even apply for the, uh, application. Um, the city staff only reviewed this application as a conditional rezone, and we didn't review it as a development plan. Um, that's because once he gets, hopefully Commonwealth gets their grant, and then they'll come back and do a development plan. Um, at the planning commission hearing last week, uh, the planning commission voted unanimously, unanimously recommend approval, um, of a conditional rezone that they found is consistent with the land use code. Um, and there was two conditions with that. Uh, the first being Commonwealth will apply for a limited impact review for a development plan if the project gets its funding and moves forward. Um, and the second being the rezone only be recorded if the project moves forward as well. And that was the request of the landlord.
Questions, Ms. Oaktree?
The, um, I was here when, when we did the major impact review. Is there any sense that the planning department has that, the development plan that they eventually presented is gonna be anything significantly different than what we saw that night?
Uh, I can't speak to that. I think there has been some changes in the preliminary layout. Um, so I think there might be some changes. Um, but yeah, that's, uh, that's why we're requiring them to come back and get a limited impact review and redo a development plan. And that's when we'll get utilities involved and all the engineering for that. With their grant kind of pending, you're in, in limbo a little bit. They don't put all that effort into the final real plan and the, um, utilities and all that. So that's kind of why we had to break it into parts, yeah.
That makes sense. And, um, and that area has other high density residential anyway, so.
That's correct, yes.
It's not a huge change.
Yeah, there's two apartment complexes on the same block, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Shu?
Uh, Michael, is there a chance that, I was just talking to Mike there. Is there, on, on the grant deal, is there a good chance for the grant? And this is part of the grant that you were talking about, that would be take the place of our grants that we've given out for low housing?
So, yeah, this, this is eligible because it's deep restricted, uh, especially at the AMIs. It is eligible for, uh, the Housing Now Taffy deferrals. Um, and I am currently tracking down and talking to all of our previous owners. Um, they have filed for a, um, Housing Now, uh, consideration. Um, and prior to us running out of funds, this would have been eligible for the extra hundred and fifty thousand because of what it is and the FBA lines it serves. Um, but they are still eligible for deep, or for the, uh, Taffy deferrals. Uh, and so those Taffy, for, Taffy deferrals will actually be a big, um, amount of support that will go forward with the CHAPA application. So, uh, something like this, that's still a, a significant, um, contribution to the city as, as deemed by CHAPA. So we can feel good about our support in that capacity. Um, and then I think, um, for now, what we intend to do is that Steve is going to write a layer of support and telling CHAPA that the Taffy deferrals will be in place through the housing agreement. And I have been, um, contacting the different applicants to ensure that those projects are still moving forward. Uh, and so if one of those projects does fall off through attrition, they'd be eligible for additional funding if this project doesn't break ground prior to, or this project's not performing. But as of right now, the projects I've talked to, they're all still very interested in trying to move forward. Uh, so right now, this project would only do the Taffys.
Thank you.
Mr. Trishel?
I don't have anything right now. Thank you.
Mr. Williamson?
So if, if this is going forward as a, a conditional rezone, um, and it come, who, who has the authority to, um, cause, cause it to not go through? Would that be planning zoning exclusively, or?
Yeah, well, what would we do is we just won't, we won't file the rezone up, and in which case that, it kind of, it's dead there.
Okay, so if, if there becomes any, uh, um, problem along the way, the, the we would consider a problem, we can, we can interrupt the process?
Um.
Say, say the, um, the, the presentation changed significantly, significantly from what we were, um, presented in the impacts, you know?
Well, the, yeah, so the limited impact will go back to the planning commission. So if there's anything major that may, we want to put a halt there, we could put a halt in that, in that instance, yeah, in the, with the planning commission, that's correct.
Okay. I, I have no further questions.
And then take that one step further. So then what's the next step if, if there are major changes and goes back?
Uh, we'll, we'll just work with the applicant like, like we usually do and, and try to get somewhere in between where we, we are happy with, with their project. And it's, um, it's a little bit back and forth at that point, yeah, to make sure that the planning commission's comfortable with what they're planning or what they're doing in, in their development plan.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mason. Is there anyone in the audience to speak for or against this, uh, ordinance? Yes, sir.
All right. Uh.
Speak your name.
My name's Ted Golds, and I'm the developer, uh, with Commonwealth Development. Um, I just wanted, want to thank you guys all for, you know, all the questions and, and willing to be a part of this process of CHAPA. Um, I know some of you have been through it once before. I mean, it's very competitive. I think I mentioned that last time, you know, every, everything's pushed, you know, and just fighting till the end in a way, um, to ensure that this gets funded this time. Um, I think to speak to the, the, you know, question that was raised on the thirty-four, you know, the significant changes, I think it's more of just the layout of the buildings. They're changing. It's still gonna be thirty-four units, no matter what. Same unit counts, two and three bedroom rooms. The only thing that changes is the orientations of buildings, and that's just kind of working with, uh, the neighbors to, to ensure that, you know, we're listening, um, and not just to put what we think is best and to listen to the, the community and what they think is best since, you know, they live and breathe it every day. Um, so I, just to clarify on what, what has changed, it's just orientation of buildings.
Okay.
But ensuring that, you know, we work with Nick and Michael in that sense. Um, the other thing I'd ask is, you know, if any of you are wanting to write letters of recommendation, um, on your own and not have just one, that's always better. The more we can kind of give CHAPA, um, and drown them with support for this project, it'd be greatly appreciated. I think it would go a long way to demonstrating support from the city, um, for this project and hopefully, uh, get awarded and hopefully start construction as soon as possible.
Would it be better if we wrote the letter as a council?
Yeah, one letter and sign one letter, the entire council. Mr. Ruder?
So Steve, so we're planning on, on point nine, you will have a letter of support in your packet for this project. Uh, and like I said, I'm dating down on whether or not we can do the additional, uh, funds through Housing Now, but we are going to mail our support, cite the Taffy deferrals for now. Um, and so we will do a formal funding agreement based on my feedback from the other projects. Um, but I, I feel like rushing that funding agreement might shortchange these guys, because I'm trying to get in touch with all the other applicants at this time.
All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Awesome. Thank you.
My honor.
Thank you.
Anybody else for or against? The meeting, the hearing is closed. Item seven E one, first reading of an ordinance amending the zone classification of property described as lying and being in the county of Los Anamos, state of Colorado, to wit township thirty-three south, range sixty-four west of the sixth prime meridian, section twelve, part of southeast quarter, northeast quarter, equalling one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hun- I'm sorry, three hundred and thirty-four square feet, or two point nine six nine acres, also known as city view heights, filing five, block number eight, lots one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, and in block nine, lots seven, eight, nine, and ten, city of Trinidad, Colorado, from medium density residential zoning to high density residential zoning. Do I have somebody who will introduce the, the ordinance? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call the vote, please. Williamson?
Yes.
Trishel?
Yes.
Oaktree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Criago? Yes. We're finished with the readings. Item eight, miscellaneous business. Item eight A, appointment of alternate to CML Policy Committee.
And Mayor, um, certainly we can pick from among the members tonight, or since we have two absentees, you can nominate one of them and surprise them. But I just want to point out, you know, up to you if you want to wait till the next meeting, um, you know, with our two absentees. But, but certainly it'd be appropriate to pick tonight as well. Sorry, I just started.
That's okay. You know, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
You know, I'm trying to think good of the equity with.
Yeah.
Other positions that council has. Do you have any thoughts?
Um, I, I would, um, I, I think it'd be best if someone would have interest in it and be, uh, you know, volunteer to self-nominate to the position, and then, then we have some buy-in that way.
Yep.
Um, alternatively, I mean, we have, uh, Councilman Trishel, uh, new, so he's, well, you know, I would, um, I would strongly consider him.
Mr. Trishel, what do you think about that?
It's a nomination.
Yeah.
Served.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll nominate Councilman, uh, Trishel.
Is there a second? Second. Call the vote, please. Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Trishel?
Yes.
Oaktree?
Yes.
Criago? Yes. Item eight B, resolution in support of Mount Carmel Wellness and Community Center Stronger Community Infrastructure Grant. Mr. Yermin, are you, are you presenting, please?
Yeah, this is me too. Um, this is the, uh, we're very excited about the possibility of, uh, getting this dollar grant for Holy Trinity. Um, when we did the, uh, site analysis around the building and that with all the utility departments, uh, we discovered that there was only a two-inch service line running from, uh, basically with the library, um, along, um, convent, right? Or, sorry, is it, is it Church Street?
Church Street.
Sorry.
Yes.
Through Church, through Church Street. Uh, that two-inch line definitely would not be large enough to supply the building with fire suppression systems that are needed for housing. Um, as well as, we also discovered that the sewer main, which is one of the major tramlines for the entire city, uh, is, I believe, a clay line in, uh, Church Street as well. So that is necessitating a quite a large upgrade for the infrastructure, um, to make this project a reality. The great news is, is that this is one hundred percent aligned with the Stronger Community Grant, um, and the field projects, uh, that they're, that door up, the part of local fairies trying to promote, uh, which is the reuse of historic buildings in downtown areas that are close to services, et cetera. So, uh, the total grant, um, from the. So the total grant from the state is four million, plus I believe another nine hundred and sixty thousand in matching grant funds. As you know, the city did pledge through the funding agreement, two hundred thousand for the project plus an additional one hundred thousand in Taffys. So that three hundred thousand will be used as the match. And then Mount Carmel, Mount Carmel will be coming in with the remainder of the match as required in the funding agreement. We are required to pass a resolution to support to go into our application for this. And I'm very excited. And at the end of the day, I think it'll be a major facelift for that block. It's not only is it going to upgrade water sewer, it's also going to upgrade the gas and electric. All of the buildings around there, the church, the rectory, the gymnasium, all are going to get new utility services provided. So when we tear up the street, we're going to reconnect all the existing service lines. And that's a major trunk line of sewer, which is also going to be replaced with a new updated line, as well as all new ADA compliant sidewalks, crossblocks on Convent and Church Street. So if this grant goes through, it will probably be six months of construction down that corner. But at the end of the day, it's going to be a major improvement to all those utility systems as they exist today.
Questions?
Mayor, council, just real quick, I just wanted to point out the surface of the street will be brick, similar to First Street or Commercial Street as well to keep consistent with our downtown.
I don't have any questions. This sounds like a great thing that is working out this way.
Yeah.
Mr. Trejo?
Got it. No questions at this time.
I have no questions, I just make a quick comment. I really appreciate the holistic approach to these projects. I mean, that's how, you know, First Street was done. We've taken care of all of the utilities under it. It's a great project, so it's, I really appreciate the holistic approach and we look forward to the results. Thank you.
I have no questions anymore. Do we need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Trejo?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes. Does this resolution have a number? My form, it has no number on it.
Do we number?
It says find after, it's a, but it does have a number.
I will read the resolution, correct? Point of clarification, yes.
I don't think we need to read the resolution, which is right.
No?
Nope.
No, read it? Okay, good. Yes, definitely.
You don't want to read it?
No, I don't want to read it. Thanks, Betty, I don't want to read it. Miscellaneous business is finished. Item nine, council reports. Who wants to start, Mr. Williamson?
I just have a couple of things. At South Central Council of Governments, we are currently going through the process of hiring a new executive director. I wanted to thank Mr. Ruger for being on the panel to interview people. I'm very optimistic, I have a great person to do that. Also, South Central Council of Governments is in the process of transitioning to being the operator of the Sayer Senior Citizen Center. So we're very excited about that. I think it's going to be great opportunities for the people that enjoy using the facility and we're looking forward to those interactions and helping make that an even more enjoyable place for the people that use it. So that's everything that I have.
Mr. Trejo?
I have nothing to report at this time, but I'm kind of assuming it's coming soon.
Yes.
Mr. Shu?
I have nothing to report. I'm going to meet the council next one.
I enjoyed my brief vacation. I'm thrilled to be back and thank you all very much for allowing me to do that. I did get a chance to listen to all of the other people who applied yesterday. I didn't have the guts to do it this, but I was so impressed with all of the people who applied. And I was like, man, they have a very hard decision. And I think it was a really useful thing for city council to hear from that cross-section of people who are so engaged and want to be part of the leadership of the city, what's important to them. And they just reiterated a lot of things that we all know in terms of economic development, they want to build our roads and engagement with the whole city. So I thought it was a very good process, but I'm glad it ended well.
Thank you for applying and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
The only thing I have is I did go with Councilman Williamson and Brian Blazey, who is the interim director of COG right now, or the executive director. And it was nice to talk to the seniors. We reaffirmed that the city is there for them, but it's their center. And they, we're going to do everything that we possibly can to make that a pleasant experience for them. The only other thing I have, and this is really important, the city of Trinidad, we're doing our strategic planning and there is a community input meeting on tomorrow night, on the seventeenth, from six to eight at the Commons. And also, again, Thursday night, the eighteenth of January, at the Commons, from six to eight. This is your time to put your input in as to what you want the city, what you want for your city. So I beg you to drop your social media gadgets for two nights or one night. Go down there and actually express to the people that can make a difference to you to go down there and express what you would like for this community to be. Other than that, I have nothing further. So reports by Mr. Ruger.
Just real brief, first of all, congratulations, Councilmember Ogletree. Good to see you back and I'm glad we have our full council. So congratulations to all of those who got elected and also the demonstration of community support by those who didn't make it to the EDS. The only other thing I had, I just wanted to thank all the organizers, the creative district, all of our staff, everybody who made the Smithsonian exhibit the amazing event that it was. And if you missed out, you really missed something terrific. So that, I believe it ended on the thirteenth, so recently. And, but I think it's just a testament to what we can use this space to create for going forward. And was just so happy to see our community come together and learn about ourselves and enjoy such a great piece of art. But thank you to all the people who helped make that happen.
Thank you. Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I just want to say that I'm really glad in the room that the selection procedure for the council, they can see went as well as it did. And I'm not saying outcome determinative, not yet. I'm just saying that I think the procedure went really well and I hope all of you feel the same way. And it resulted in a wonderful outcome. But, and congratulations, Councilman Trejo. I just want to say though, you know, and I hate to comment on public comment in any public forum. The general rule is, that's verboten. I just want to say that for those who want to criticize the process, and yes, I suppose I did a little defensive of things like that. But it could not have been, and I am reluctant to use this word, but it really was random. I mean, as I sit here now, I don't know how all of you voted specifically, but the results as Steve was bringing them in and how it was going and the number of people and the number of candidates that were advancing and the, you know, there was a lot of support amongst you for really almost everyone in the cross-section. And I, you know, just to suggest that the fix was in, is so wrong and there were a lot of people who were advancing to the very end. And, you know, we all know what the outcome was and we did have wonderful candidates. It really seems like it could have gone in a number of different directions, you know, right up until the end. And anyway, I just, I hope you like the procedure. I, you know, council, at the time, Ms. Ogletree, now Councilman Ogletree, mentioned during her interview a time or two, the lawyer's brain and how her brain thinks. Well, this lawyer's brain was really worried that something was going to go awry. It seems very simple, the procedure does. But anyway, so I'm just glad it went well. I, whatever the outcome would have been, it would have been a fair process. It would have been an appropriate process. It would have been, it would have been good. The outcome is wonderful, but it would have been good no matter what happened. And so I better shut up before I say something that gets me in trouble. But I just think everybody did well and I hope that you guys thought the process was okay and fair and appropriate. You know, I was looking at the charter and you guys, you do fill the vacancy. And it does say, if you guys can't fill the vacancy, going to go see a special election. And God forbid that should have to happen. I, anyway, so of course you had ping pong ball back stop. But it was just a good process and welcome back. That's what I'm trying to say, welcome back. So thank you, that's all I have. Yeah, I'm sorry, that was long. I got it, Ted said be quiet less. Just kidding. Yeah, I know, I won't say it was long. But that's all I have, thank you.
All right. Before I call for adjournment, just a reminder that our next meeting will be a work session on January twenty-second at three o'clock in the afternoon. And at this point, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, too.
Second.
On paper.
Aye.
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 Hearing is adjourned.